Going to call the meeting order, roll call.
Mrs. Kratz.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Mr. Zalada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
All present.
Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting and I welcome our Borre Town area, school district, community, for those watching here in person and those listening virtually as well. We did want to take on behalf of the board, take a moment this evening to recognize a former member of the board for their service. We received word of Mr. Robert Haas who had passed away recently. Mr. Haas was a board member, held various positions here on the Borre Town area school district board, had and held many different terms, one of which was from 1988 to 1992 and then from 2007 through 2013. And certainly on behalf of the board, we wanted to send our thoughts and prayers to his family and friends during this time period.
There was no previous executive session and no one has signed up for public comment period number one.
So it takes us to our discussion and information session and we are here in a different location this evening, recognizing Colbertdale Elementary School and the pride of which. And this evening, we have a neat presentation from Colbertdale Elementary's No Place For Hate Club, who planned the annual soup, soup herbal food drive, a schoolwide collection of canned goods and non-perishables. Students placed non-perishables in the container that coincided with the football team that they were rooting for. I'm sure one box was probably a little larger than the other. To introduce the food drive, the students went to each room and read a book called Saturday at the Pantry. They introduced Preston's pantry and how it supports Borre Town families who are in need. Some members of the No Place For Hate Club, as well as Colbertdale's school counselor, Mrs. Johnson, have joined us to tell you more about the event this evening. So I'd like to welcome Ms. Johnson and the students to the podium for their presentation.
Hello. Thank you for... Sorry. Hello. Thank you for having us here tonight. My students have done a lot of work to teach the other students about food insecurity. This has been an annual event at Colbertdale for at least 20 years. And my No Place For Hate committee, if you want to change the slide, I have 10 kids that I work with. And this year, they decided that they wanted to do a learning component to go along with the food drive so that kids could learn a little bit about why we do the annual Super Bowl.
Activity one, teach students about food insecurity and how community supports can help those in need. Explain how our annual soup herbal food collection helps families in our community get the food they need.
Let me introduce, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce. This is Leah Mindrup, this is Casey McGee, and this is Mallory Deal. And they volunteered to be here tonight to share with you what we've done. So we're going to introduce you to the book. Casey, do you want to tell them a little bit about?
So this is a book that we, this is a book that we read in all the classes. It's Saturday at the Food Pantry. And this is showing that to all the other kids that it's okay that we need, that sometimes we need help of all of our food and clothes and all that stuff that we need. And we're going to read this book about all of what we need.
So I'm showing you the book so you can see exactly what it says.
Dinner, Mom called. Chili again, Molly asked. They'd had it every day this week, last week too. Yup, Mom said. Taste even better. The spices sink in. Mom ladled the last of the chili into their bowls.
We have fancy milk too, Molly grinned. She watched Mom pour milk into the sugar and spices in her cup. Mom shook the milk carton, just a tiny splash, and put it in the refrigerator. Tomorrow, we'll get food, Mom said. We're going shopping? Molly's eyes lit up. Chicken and spaghetti and ice cream. Well, sort of. We're going to the, to a food pantry. What's a food pantry, Molly asked. It's a place for people who need food. Mom stood up straight, her chin high. Everyone needs help sometimes. At bedtime, Mom usually made warm fancy milk and read a story tonight, just a story. Molly tossed and turned, trying to sleep, her hunger growled.
The next morning, they walked to the food pantry. Why do we need to wait, Molly asked. The pantry isn't open yet, Mom said. It's only open certain hours. Molly pulled paper and crowns out of her backpack. She started drawing. Then she looked up. Look, Mom, there's Caitlin. She's in my class. Hey Caitlin. Caitlin looked away.
Molly ran over to her. Didn't you hear me? Caitlin looked down. I don't want anybody to know Granny and I need help, she whispered. Oh, Molly walked back to her mom. Was there something wrong with needing help? Molly wanted to go home, but she was hungry. You okay, Mom asked. Why don't you draw me a picture? I love your drawings. The woman in front of them turned around, smiling at Molly. An artist. Will you draw one for me too?
Molly pulled out her crowns again. Maybe drawing a happy picture would cheer her up. Hey, can you draw me a picture too? Me too. Will you draw me one? Molly ran to Caitlin with paper and crowns in her hand. Help everybody, uh, help everybody wants pictures. I can't draw that fast.
Soon, a woman opened the door. Molly and Caitlin each handed her a picture. Thank you. What wonderful gifts. Welcome, please sign in, said the man at the desk. Mom didn't have to sign in. No, Mom didn't have to sign her name when they went to the grocery store, Molly thought. But the moms, but the man smiled back at them. Thanks. Grab a cart. And stop here when you're done. Lots of good food today. Thanks, Mom said. She smiled, but just a little, not like when they played at the park. The food pantry was like a little store when they sometimes brought bread and milk. Cans and boxes were on plain metal shelves. Molly ran toward the shelf and picked up a box of sugar cookies. No, Mom said. Then she whispered. The people, they, the people in charge, they want us to, they want us to take sensible stuff. Mom's face turned pink. Molly's eyes widened. Why didn't her mom think, why did her mom think that? Why were cookies here if you weren't supposed to take them? The woman at the door and the man at the desk had seemed nice. Would they really not want Molly and her mom to have cookies? Molly swallowed tears. She put the cookies back. They would have been good with fancy milk.
Help me put food, help me put food in the cart, she sighed. Mom sighed. Just like Caitlin, Mom looked like she wanted to be invisible. But none of them were doing anything wrong. Everyone needs help sometimes, Molly whispered to her mom. Remember? Mom smiled. You're right. Molly pointed at the sign on a huge bin of fruit. What if somebody wants to... And cantaloupes. A lot of people need help, Mom said. They have to make sure they have enough food for everybody who comes here. Molly and Mom put oranges and cantaloupe in their cart.
Mom handed Molly cans of corn, tomatoes and cling peaches, bags of red beans, pinto beans and brown rice, a loaf of wheat bread, a box of oatmeal and a bag of sugar, spaghetti noodles, sauce and grated cheese, raisins and tuna and peanut butter too. Mom reached for a big box of powdered milk. We'll have fancy milk tonight. They checked out at the desk, the man pointed to the wall. Oh, Molly ran to Caitlin. Come here, look. Molly's rainbow sparkled. Caitlin's elf grinned. I was in a sad mood, the man said. Your artwork, your artwork helped. Thank you. He put their groceries into bags. Then he handed Molly's mom a box of sugar cookies. Saw your girl looking at these. She can have them if it's okay with your mom. If it's okay with you, ma'am. Mom had a funny look, almost like she wanted to cry. She nodded. Thank you. Everybody deserves a treat, the man said. Enjoy.
Molly and Mom walked home. They each carried a buggling bag. Molly, she looked around and saw Caitlin and her grand. I don't know, you live so close, Mom said to Caitlin's grand. How nice. We're neighbors. Caitlin grand, Caitlin's grand said. I'll keep looking for, I'll keep looking for work. They closed the factory, Mom said. I've been sick, said Caitlin's grand. We got lots of yummy food, Molly said. Did you? Yeah, Caitlin shrugged. I just wished we didn't have to come to the food pantry.
Molly said, but every, but everybody needs help sometimes and we helped. We cheered people up. Caitlin grinned. We did, didn't we? We have an idea. I have an idea. Let's have lunch together, Molly said. Yes, Caitlin agreed. And we have dessert. Molly said. The man at the pantry gave me sugar cookies. There's enough for all of us. Let's eat. And they did. What we can do, empathy. About every one of, out of, about every one out of seven kids experienced food insecurity. Show kindness and support to those who might not have enough food at home. Food drive. We can donate food and personal care items for our local food pantry and for Borre Town families in need. Super Bowl food drive. Every year, CES students show their support for Preston's pantry by bringing in items during the week before the Super Bowl. They place their items in the bin that matches the NFL team that they would like to win the Super Bowl. We count the items to see which team is favored to win by our kids. In the end, the entire community is the winner.
Important note, if your families, if your family is in need of food, Preston's pantry can help. As Molly said in the story, everyone needs help sometimes.
Thank you. And this was the message that we share with all of our students so they understand exactly why we do the food drive and how it can help our family, our friends, and our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, students, and thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you to Principal Mason for hosting us this evening. And I see a number of Colbertdale teachers here in the audience, so thank you for allowing us into the building this evening experiencing Colbertdale. So it takes us down to our second discussion item. And Ms. Danicola is going to give just a little bit of update. Last week, the governor had a state of the address budget proposal, and we want to share some highlights and its impact statewide, but also what's, what are the impacts here locally to us? And again, these are just projections at this time, but thought it was, would be very helpful as we are in the throes of budget right, season right now. Ms. Danicola?
So Governor Shapiro presented his budget on February 4th last week. For basic education funding, he proposed a $75 million increase statewide for a total basic education funding statewide of about $8.2 billion. For special education funding, he proposed a $40 million increase, which totals about a $1.5 billion spending statewide for special education. For the adequacy supplemental funding, funding, he proposed a $526 million increase or $1.3 billion statewide. He proposed for career and technical schools, a $5.5 million funding increase. For early intervention programs, he proposed a $14.6 million increase. He proposed safety and security grants of $100 million, public school facilities improvement grants of $125 million. And he also proposed homestead-farmstead property tax relief of $120 million of an increase. And we will receive our homestead-farmstead allocation for our district residents on May 1st. At that point, we calculate based upon the available homestead and farmstead properties in each of our counties, what the tax relief on each person's tax bill will be. There was no appropriation in Governor Shapiro's 2025-26 budget for cyber charter tuition reimbursement. In the current year, 2024-25, we are slated to receive $490,000 for cyber charter reimbursement. There was nothing included in Governor Shapiro's budget for next year. So as far as how does Governor Shapiro's proposed budget impact our district Borre Town, I will tell you that the current proposed appropriations are highly speculative. As we know, there'll be much negotiation in Harrisburg till these numbers come to some kind of fruition. For basic education funding, we are slated to receive $19,259,556, which is a $155,411 increase over the current year, 2024-25. For English as a Second Language programs, no state funding is received to directly support ESL. Our 2023-24 expenses were, for these programs, were $194,797. For special education funding for 25-26, we are slated to receive $5,248,260. That's a $122,865 increase over the current year. Just to put in perspective what that funding does to support our special education program, in 2023-24, our expenses were $26,684,429. And in 2022-23, our expenses were $25,2861. So the special education funding we receive, while great, it supports only just a very small portion of our overall special education spending. For the ready-to-learn funding, the ready-to-learn block grant, the foundational piece as the state refers to it, we are slated to receive $2,226,614. That's a $1,449,781 increase over the current year. We are also slated to receive $1,449,817 in the adequacy supplement piece of ready-to-learn, which is a $373 increase over the current year. And again, we are slated to lose our cyber charter reimbursement of roughly $425,000. And that's the bulk of the budget at this point.
Any questions for Mrs. Danicola? Again, just some projections that we just wanted to get in front of you. And we'll provide some more information in the weekly for you as more numbers are somewhat deciphered. You can see here, and we talk about underfunded components to the budget. One of the things that continues for districts across Pennsylvania is special education funding. You can see the discrepancy there in the expenditures versus what the funding allocation could possibly be. Very much underfunded. Our ESL program, that's English as a Second Language, the development of that program and the requirement that we have under code to educate the students that come in as English not their first language is not funded at all. There is no funding toward that. That is completely under local control in terms of all the funding expenses with regard to that. So just gives a little perspective from a large scale across the state and what's, what does that feel like as a Borre Town resident as well and what the board must work with in terms of funding mechanisms? So it takes us down to item C. Placed on the board here on the agenda for discussion this evening, you know, as we start to enter into real investigative stages of various programs, one of which is the consideration of all-day kindergarten as we start to really look at the capacities of our buildings as it is to enrollment. It's been approximately eight years since a formalized demographic enrollment study has been completed inside the district. And recommending to the board that you consider going out for a request for proposal of a demographic study. If you could go to, Mrs. Moyer, go to page eight of that, please. That's most important in regards to the request for proposal. And it really takes a look at the requested services that various companies, organizations would be looking at in the scope of services that we, we believe would be most helpful to us here. And you can go through that list and just see some of the things that you would expect to see in any type of study and how the data is gathered, the presentation of that data and its estimate by current buildings, along with, you know, birth rate and its patterns and using all the various standards to which produce a very comprehensive demographic study for us. In addition, we put a couple of extra things in there, you know, as to what's, what would be the time period for them to complete a study if you were to go with an organization. And then ultimately, a final presentation to the board that will allow some, some question and answer involved in this. This is a pretty boilerplate template of an RFP for a demographic enrollment study. A number of RFPs in this way are passed around throughout districts. This is one of those most are very similar unless you had some real serious targeted concerns that you wanted to look at. I think for Borre Town, a holistic study just to really look at the district itself and what some of the data could inform us about as we look outward over 10 years, you know, as we're, we're starting to build a strategic plan, as we're starting to build other things. We need some data that would help us. Again, this is a projection study. It is projections and different factors throughout time impact that. Those that went out for demographic studies right before the pandemic, that was a worldwide altering shift of many different levels. And I'm not sure some of the conclusions that came prior to that necessarily occurred as expected thereafter. There were so many different changes and alterations with worldwide and markets and various other things that took place. But this is something that I just wanted to present to the board. If you had questions, had thoughts about this, what did you think, would you think of the recommendation to go out and do this? Again, this is, that does not cost you anything to go out. This is putting that out, literally out on the street to see who would bid this and to see what the cost structures would, would be to come back at.
There it is. I do have a list of some concerns I have. I don't know if you want me to discuss them now or if you want me to send you the list or...
It's really up to you. Are they things that you would want added into the study or are they just concerns about the study itself?
Well, concerns that I'm thinking there's some lack of some stuff in there.
Okay.
I don't see any criteria for assessing the bids. It's solely based on a price, on experience. If we get a bunch of different proposals with different styles and layouts, how are you going to specify what we're gonna?
Yeah. And then those are things that the board's going to have to take into consideration as to what, what exactly and how you want this. We're laying out some of the structures to the components inside of that. The evaluation system would really be a determinant of the board as to, as to how you would evaluate those.
And then I have a list of like five things that deficiencies or potential issues. Lack of clear evaluation criteria, no defined budget or funding limitations, no mention of data sources or access to internal records, vague timeframe for completion, and the lack of community engagement requirement. But I can send you a list of that.
Yeah, that would be helpful. The data sources are going to be those that they're explained in their proposal that they utilize. The community's not necessarily engaged in this. They're going to ask for a lot of data from us in terms of...
Shouldn't we be telling what we're looking for though?
Beyond the 10 things that are listed there, other, if you want other components added to that, then you'll have to move those toward us so we can include those in the proposal for being out there. Yeah, that would be helpful.
The survey we had done, or the study we had done, the study we had done, the study we had done about eight years ago, how did that compare to what was happening in the district? Because we paid a lot of money for that one.
Yeah. It, it allowed you and informed you on a restructuring for the schools at that particular time. You were also closing a school at that particular time to do that. So the numbers mirror fairly on an overall projection mirror somewhat pretty closely to where they are. Like if we look at grade to grade as to what some of those things are. So those stood pretty closely. You had some targeted things that were done to really target, you know, how you're going to, I think you called it rightsizing at the time and how to redistrict. So some of those evaluations were put into place and were components of the study itself, which I don't think we have the same structures in place to necessarily have to do that for this.
This goes out to Pennsylvania area stuff? It's not out of state stuff that people that are going to come in and do this?
So there's, there tends to be, you know, we, we often send it to various planning. There's certain targeted folks that do demographic studies that most school districts are aware of, and we will send invitations out to them with regard to that to do. This goes out and it's publicized. Anybody can, can, can study this. There could be organizations that are even outside of the state of Pennsylvania that, that may want to do a demographic study of the school district itself. So yes, it's literally can be open to, to anyone.
If I remember correctly, it was DEI that did it the last time?
Yeah, I believe so.
Do we have that? I think I might have my copy at home, but if not, do we still have that somewhere that we can?
Yeah, we, I can dig you up something that would give you...
I think it was like...
Yeah, correct. Yeah. Let me see what I can find. And I can get, probably give you some relevant pages to it that are probably more relevant to what you might want to see as you're matching. So I guess my question is, are we, would you like me, Mrs. Nyman has some things she wants to bring back. Do I, would you like me to bring those back and possibly include those in this RFP, bring them back to the legislative meeting for another review of it? How would you and what would you like me to do with? Okay. All right. You can do that. Thank you. Okay, this takes us down to item D, planetarium informational update. There was a request made by a couple of different board members throughout the fall in investigative stages with regard to the planetarium. Administration did some of those investigations. You had an opportunity as a board to come into Middle School East to look at the planetarium. And we were able to respond to you recently in terms of our recommendations with regard to the planetarium. Are there any questions, items you, Mr. Brophy, I know you, you had some, some questions you had, you had sent.
A few things, I guess so. In, in the, in the process, which is what we're following here is the administration proposes, looks at things, proposes issues, brings the recommendations to the board, which is how, how it's supposed to work. And that's exactly what we're doing here. The board on governance and oversight decides if they accept or reject that. On this one, we don't agree. My belief is, on this particular issue is that schools that are trying to stand out and be better, if they have things that they can differentiate themselves from other districts, should pursue. I think in this case, we have a good start on doing that with this issue. We ran it for 30 years, so we have a history with it. We should have some idea of how to do that. We, the, I was looking for, I see your document. It was, you know, a lot of stuff's in there. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here at this time and discuss cost, price, things like that, because this isn't the time for that. But I would have, in my mind, preferred to see something come back to me that, that said, yes, we can. And what I saw here is more of why we can't. And I don't think that's the way a district that's trying to get ahead of everybody else should go. I think this is a differentiation type issue. I think it's something we can go forward on. And I think it's something we should, should go. So I'm going to, you know, which is not surprising to you, is disagree with your assessment. But on one vote, I would like to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
When we met to look at the facility, I thought the teacher was gung ho and the one that showed it to us. And now I'm reading, he's not interested, but, and that's why it would have been nice to have him here tonight. But there's things in here I don't agree with at all. We talked about the seats. I could rip this thing apart. I'm not going to go into tit for tat because we talked about some of these things and your findings show something entirely different. I guess I'd just like to know why. We just put an astronomy class at the high school and now you're saying you have no interest in a planetarium. And is this a decision that was made by the entire administration? Who makes these decisions when you have meetings of what goes on? And what's a criteria of something, if the board decided they would like it checked into that we'd have to provide for administration to give their seal of approval?
So when we, you were, you charged back in the fall, Mr. Stout, to explore the possibilities of the planetarium. And that was done, right? And you visited, the teacher took time even after you had visited the planetarium to visit two other schools. And that informed him and really informed him of the need for the requirement of two FTEs. Yeah. Well, he, well, you had one before, but your program shuttered because you only had one. Your program shuttered because there was a retirement of the individual and they had no other individual. And we didn't really have a system in place with additional staff to then support, nor, you know, had the facility been updated in about 30 years in terms of that. So I think that, and I can't speak to the decision overall, but my, what I can assume that it was shuttered for, you know, we had no other teacher and the facility had not been updated at that particular time. You know, we meet all of the steel standards in the curriculum to which we have. The planetarium, it is a rare, and I completely agree with you, of a differentiation component. It stands, there aren't many in the region with regard to it. And there's probably not many in the region with regard to it for many of the reasons why we're not recommending. There's a, there's a large cost structure with regards to it. Obviously, a planetarium has to be built if you're, if you're going to have it. And we're one of the unique folks that don't have that. But, you know, the teacher informed us of really the need for two teachers to operate this. If one teacher's not there, there's daytime, there's nighttime, there's all sorts of different CBA requirements that are inside of this when it comes to that. So the recurring costs of, you know, and I had given you some, some costs of about $200,000 with salaries and benefits and transportation and things of that nature. I don't disagree with the fact that it is a wonderful program to have. When we're at a time period right now where we really are trying to numbers crunch and come to you with things that we really need and are required at the time because of caseload sizes and special education, because of equity issues across our buildings when it comes to our counseling staff. Those are the needed things that, you know, a planetarium at this time is a nice to have, not a need to have requirement in regards to it. If the board so chooses to move in a direction to revitalize and do that, then we're gonna have to think a little bit differently with budget and where those, with some of those numbers, because the numbers are a component to this. It's not a suggestion of, of what we can or what we can't do. We are really trying to be cognizant of how do we do a lot of different things inside of a budget when it comes to the financial components to this. It's a wonderful place to be able to do that, but there, there's a reality to cost. The one-time costs to the planetarium, I think, are, and you have a wonderful foundation. I held a lovely meeting with them. I think there was a lot of confidence in, in that they could probably raise the funding needed for the projection system in there. That's one component to it. And we talked about some of the other components that are in there. There are one-time costs that aren't too great. The reoccurring nature to this and maintaining this program year after year after year is a costly component for something that, you know, we would develop for K-12, but it's, it's certainly not something that we would shy away from, but it's not something that we're recommending at this time. So the longer, my longer-winded answer to that is the administration, that's Mr. Stout, we talked with the teacher involved in there. We've talked with Principal Sparks as well to make that recommendation as to what we felt we needed to bring to the board in regards to that. So that's, that's the process and evaluation. And to give you all the facts and figures that are related to that inside of it.
Of course, to do that as a minimal, we don't, you said we don't need it. And you're right, we don't. But yet we put another astronomy class in, at the high school. We didn't need that either, but yet we did. And that's fine if there's a need for it. But is there a need for turf? And we're looking at spending $8 million or $7 million for 250 kids. This will benefit the entire district if it's worked out right, that you have it. Everybody will get a chance to do that. If you pick a specific grade, the only bus that you'll have is to bus them from west to east for that one year, or however you lay out the program. And there was programs done before. And I'm sure you have fingers in here or talk about software. So I don't understand where you have to make a big program. And has anybody contacted Mr. Dedeline to see what information he could give us or what?
I think Mr. Stout had reached out back in the fall with regard to that one. Is that, is that correct? Mr. Idle did and had those conversations with him with regard to it. So I'm not disputing your, your, your statements with regard to that, but this is an over $200,000 reoccurring cost to maintain this, this type. In our estimate, this is the type of cost structure annually it would be to maintain this component. And yes, we run astronomy classes. Most high schools throughout the country run astronomy classes absent of a planetarium to be able to do those types of things. A lot of things now that are projected and, you know, in some of the software that we have on computers are pretty phenomenal as well. So yeah, it is a wonderful experience to go through a planetarium and have that, that offering. Like you said, it's typically arranged through a grade level at an elementary. And we cycle those through and it's a great community component to it. But the recommendation still holds it from our administration of, you know, it's not a recommendation that, that, that we're recommending to move forward with at this time. Mr. Up the group?
So a few things. We have the building. We have the planetarium. It sounds like we may get the projector for free. I don't see why we wouldn't explore every option possible to do some sort of program there and bring it back to whatever level that we could. It doesn't have to be full bore or whatever the scenario is. And also too, and this isn't, I mean, we just talking about Mr. Dedeline. I do know that he's very interested in basically helping and advising us as we move forward with this. He certainly has no interest in coming back to teach it or anything along those lines. But we do have, you know, a pretty good resource right in our pockets that's still around here too. So I think that's another thing we should consider.
And that's why I suggested an alternate method of, you know, I really do, and until this determination's made from the board as to what direction you want to go in, I think there is that alternative, you know, the Montgomery County Community College, you know, they have a new NASA center that they built, I think that's probably about seven, eight years ago, that is, runs in a similar fashion that you would run this type. It attracts schools and grade level students to it. And it's an educational center, STEM-based to, you know, the exploration components to that. For them in terms of seeking their interest to come in and run those types of programs with the obligation that it runs our grade levels through it, but allow the expenses to be, and a rental fee and lease fee or whatever you want to determine, to operate through them in a way to be more cost-effective. So the ownership of, of the personnel and of those expenses are really dedicated to an outside organization whilst we still get all the complementary components that are part of that. I think that's a, that's an alternate option that could suffice and allow, still allow that, that, that type of possibility for us.
I guess I'd like to see what board members are interested in possibly in pursuing this or getting more information or doing more research or whatever it's going to take to change administration's mind.
Yeah, just one more quick thing on the costs, which I don't really talk about right now too much. There was a whole series of grants that I provided. Have we looked at them at all? Because they, because they, they're all STEM-based and we will get, we will get backing for those if we put in for them.
Yeah. And, and looking at those, I looked at most of the upfront, the one-time costs would, would be captured inside of that. One of the things that's never really going to be captured inside is personnel cost, right? That's, that's not something anybody's going to invest in. They invest in, right. So I, and I do think, you know, outside the foundation, if they were to be dedicated on, on the projection system itself, I think the other, I think it was roughly just a little 130,000, I think of other costs. I think a number of those things could be covered inside of those.
And that's why I would hate to miss the opportunity now to pretty much put this together structurally for almost nothing. I think if we walk away from that, it's not something we should do. I think we, I think we need to, I believe, we need to move forward with it and then look at other alternatives like you've talked about as far as how we run it. Because I don't want to discuss how we're going to run it right now. This isn't the time or place for that. But getting everything in, getting the program on the ground and getting it started, I think, is a, is a great enhancement for the school, absolutely for the school. I think it helps us stand out a little bit. I think it's a great STEM program. It just, it just to me seems a direction, we have an opportunity and I think it's a direction we should continue to move on. I know it's more work and it's worth things we got to do, but I think it's worthwhile.
Yeah. And I'm certainly not concerned about the work in regards to that. So, you know, I'll leave that to Mr. Panarell to make a decision if we need to move forward with a motion to, you know, attune it to doing the things that you'd like done with regard to it. So it puts into motion the grant exploration pieces, puts into motion the foundation pieces. You know, I, I can't sit here and say that I don't have great concerns about that reoccurring, you know, cost structure that, that, that comes with that. And, you know, against the things that we right now know we need and are a requirement component to it. So, you know, that's something that the board has to decide if that's a direction they want us to move in. We can certainly do that.
If I recall, I was on the board at the time when Mr. Dedeline retired and left. And that was a sad day for this community. Unfortunately, he did and we're here now. But as I recall, Mr. Dedeline was also making money on that because he ran things at night. People were attending it. And I think if we get the right people in place, and it's sad that that gentleman that did, Mr. Idle, because he seemed very energetic for it. And it was, sounded like it was going to be a great thing for him. So I'm kind of heartbroken about that whole part of it.
Yeah. And I think his dedication to the district and to the board and the exploration of that is one thing. And I think he was eager to do all of that. I think his, his heart is, is in being a high school science teacher and where he really wanted, wants to be and has desired to do so.
But in hearing that Mr. Dedeline, if that's correct, I mean, that would be fantastic if he would get involved back here again and help us get it back up and running.
So I heard that from his brother, not directly from him, but just, so I don't want anyone to hold me through that, but I trust his brother.
Okay. Okay. So I recall when, when we were there to view it and we went over everything and correct me if I'm wrong, that when they were talking about the newer software and the newer products for this, that it was easier to train, I think we had one person then that was trained to do everything and he ended up, is that, isn't that what they said? And then it would be easier to train, you know, have a couple of teachers. I'm not sure I get the full-time. I mean, is it going to be open like from eight in the morning till eight, nine at night or what? Where does that full-time? Because I'm thinking, well, we could have someone, a part-timer in AM or whenever, and then maybe someone in the PM for three or four days a week, something like that. So I'm not sure. I mean, that's a lot of money and I don't see two full-time teachers that are just going to be doing that? Or do you have other things they're going to be doing as well?
Yeah. So under, and again, I don't know that trips are back-to-back-to-back and, you know, you're stacking it that way. But, you know, we're certainly for a specific, you know, earth-space science certification, which is required to teach astronomy in a K-12 environment, somebody that can deliver that both at the elementary level as a certificated individual and at a secondary level as a certificated individual, does bring its difficulties. And it's not simply, let's bring somebody in for an AM, right? There's, there's challenges with staffing, those, those, those types of things. And those are things that down the road, would, if this does move forward in, in doing that, we'd have to really kind of figure out. And but there's some serious challenges with regard to that. It was Mr. Idle's recommendation that two individuals after exploring, most especially over at North Penn and looking at their planetarium and how they operate that and how they divide and kind of conquer a K-12 sequencing. That was the recommendation for, for staffing that. And again, you know, listen, if you have one individual, that one individual isn't there that day and there's supposed to be three elementary classes coming in, I'm not sure what we do at that point in time, right? There's no backup plan. There's no other, right? We just can't throw a substitute in there. So... So, it becomes some challenges, you know, as you start to think about the layers to it, our challenges to it. So, you know, that's an estimate of where we landed with two FTEs when it comes to that.
I think what Brad said, if we reached out to our local, whether it's Redding, Montgomery, to see if they have, one, if they're teaching that class at the college, you probably could get some mentors or kids working just to get points towards their graduation. I do agree, it's something that we can hang our hat on. And, I mean, if it fell through five years from now, it looks like maybe we're talking about, which is still a lot of money, about $200,000, but I would agree going forward to look into, you know, talking to some colleges and then also talk to the gentleman that worked before and see what suggestions he may come up with. So, you know, people that have been in it. I don't know. I was in it when I saw it when I was in school there. That's the only time I was in it, but I remember we had one teacher there. But actually, it was a class for the middle school for east. We didn't even bring kids over from the west, which people complained about that. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it in a dead file right now. I think we just need to research it more. And from the initial cost from, with Boyertown helping with this, I mean, they're putting up a substantial amount of $127,000. And I think there may be some other people that are willing to put something up and we can go from there.
Or several brands.
Yeah. Now, I saw the list of grants also and, you know, and again, it's just a matter of communicating and giving examples to our representatives and then let them go work.
But we have to work for representatives.
Yeah, we do, yeah. Right. Anything, when it comes to education, we have three very strong representatives that are working for us.
And just so the board's clear, I mean, we would need to have certificated individuals in there delivering that instruction. That couldn't be somebody, you know, folks that we pull from the college or campus and, you know, things of that nature.
If we were to rent it and, you know...
Well, some of your evening things could possibly be if they're just that, but anything during the course of the day, we're writing this into a K-12 scope and sequence inside of our curriculum and this is part of that, that needs to be identified with a certificated individual.
And I understand what you're saying, but what I'm thinking is you could grow into that. Once you get, once you start moving the program forward, you could even start it out as possibly club oriented, where you don't need all of the degreed individuals. In fact, IT could even lend a hand on this. But I understand you're going right to the full program. But what I'm thinking is you start it, get it moving and then grow it into the program. That way, it's a slower approach, it's a more measured approach and you might actually find the teachers easier that way. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not there, but I'm just saying it's like, instead of grabbing the whole thing like this, let's just take this chunk here and then just take this chunk here. I just don't particularly want to leave free money out there that can give us something that enhances the school district.
The decision will need to be made if the board wants to take a motion then down, you know, that would direct us to begin some process. There's many financial components. We can't do it at this meeting as it's just an informational meeting, but, you know, we could bring forward a motion to look at some specificities that you'd want so that it could start a process of this.
That's all, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Just so it's not dead.
We will bring, we'll bring that, what I'll do is bring it to, we'll bring a motion, not a motion, I'll bring an informational component at the March committee of the whole meeting, if that were to then possibly turn into a motion in March for the legislative meeting. So, there's at least another discussion period for you and others. I'm sorry?
What are the grants?
You have to look at the grants.
Well, part of the thing, well, grants are always evolving. They're...
The ones that we gave in already.
The ones that we turned in already.
We haven't turned them.
We can't turn them.
She gave us a list.
Yeah, but I don't know what the dates are.
But I thought she sent them to administration also.
So...
I sent them to administration.
So, with grants, we first need to have a motion that directs us as to what we, what it is we're going to be doing so that it can be memorialized in the grant writing process to it. We can't go in there with a thought idea. You're going in there with something that has allowed the board to...
Can you review the grants and see if there is a sunset on them or what the sunset is?
Yeah, and they're ever-evolving too. There's some of those and, yeah.
I think you'll be able to get those, we'll get more, but we obviously don't want to miss them. But if there's no other time factor involved, there's no, there's no rush, we got to go and do this tomorrow. This is something we can evolve into and it's been, it's been down a few years, so we can take some time to bring it back. I'd just like to, you know, continue moving forward with it, but as Mrs. Deroff has said, if we're going to sunset away from some money, then maybe we look at it a little bit quicker. That's all.
Understood.
And we got to make, we should make sure that the Education Foundation's 100% on board too.
They're pretty tight.
I understand, but...
Let me see if all the board members are...
Yeah, we need the board members to say what they want.
Yeah, I know.
I asked if all the board members were in for it, nobody answered, so I'm out.
So, we'll look for some direction and we'll try to get some information back in March about grants. I'll have another touch base with the foundation prior to that as well in terms of just kind of getting their commitment level to this and, you know, if we move forward down the line of a motion that would direct the administration then to proceed with something, we can do that.
I would like to get, for us to put as little money out of our pocket as we can.
Yeah, one thing about grants is they are ever occurring, right? There are some of those, there are some that come out tomorrow, there are some that come out in a week from now, right? They're, yeah, understood.
It's not really a question, it's a comment. Any revenue that's generated from any of the nighttime thing is going to offset our expenses. So, our expenses might not be what you're thinking.
When, did we discuss that when you talked about Penn, that they didn't get as much revenue as they thought they were hoping to get off of running their planetarium or not? The school district that has it in North Penn, they weren't getting as much income as they thought they might. I'm just, I remember hearing that, but, you know, anything that can offset, I agree with you, Chris, is 100%.
That takes us down to item E, special education. There were a few agreements, settlement agreements there for the board to review in terms of those, most of those shifting more toward the positive if you were to read through those. We'll bring those forward at our next legislative meeting for consent. Takes us down to the Boyertown YMCA. This is an annual agreement that you've had with the YMCA. This is, does reflect a 3% increase from last year's agreement. And I know there were some adjustments made a couple of years ago to kind of re-center that and the board had some discussion in that a couple of years ago. So, this is really a replicated agreement with a 3% bump in terms of that.
On the rental, the first, was that at summer camp?
Yes, this is, this is the summer camp.
Is it in there? I didn't read the agreement, I apologize. Is it in there to have it at Boyertown Elementary?
That I don't have an answer for you and I'd have to get back to you.
Because we always say, always had it at Boyertown Elementary because of the pool.
It's, I think it's L and West. Boyertown L and West.
Okay, but we don't have the pool there no more, so there's a reason it has to be at Boyertown L. And if we're going to be doing any renovation or anything there, I don't want it held up because we went and signed an agreement for this summer. So, I'm not in favor of signing that until we know if another school would be, that we have an alternate school in there or however you would word it. Because you're, we've been waiting so long to get repairs done at Boyertown Elementary and then if you rent this out to the Y and we will go to start, oh, we can't because we already rented it out. Did I make sense of what I'm saying?
It does, clearly. So, we will take a look at that and I believe your presentation at next week's meeting with regard to Boyertown hopefully better informs us of timeline in terms of their recommendation if you were to proceed with anything and whether or not...
Am I supposed to be approving this tonight?
No.
No?
No, this is informational only.
So, we'll check that out with the Y if they'd be okay for another school?
I'll have that prepared by the time we meet in two weeks.
Okay, because they always used, I tried it before and they said, no, they want that school.
Okay.
And it was because of the pool, but there's no pool no more, so...
Item H, oh, I'm sorry.
In reference to that, could we do all of it over at Middle School West since I know they are working on the pool? They do have some funding coming in to bring that back? Would we have?
I don't know from a space, I had to find out from, from a space standpoint whether or not that would be conducive.
I'm just throwing that out there in case we need to have it at Boyertown for the pool.
Yep.
I don't know how long they're looking at on the pool, but I do know there is, there is funding out there and groups going to get that updated, so...
Okay. Item H is the BCIU, or excuse me, yeah, BCIU Early Intervention Lease Agreement at West. This again is a classroom that's utilized for early intervention hosted at West and again, this reflects a 3% increase as well.
I think that's Washington.
Yeah, didn't I say that? Sorry about that, at Washington.
Mr. Prove, couldn't they use Pine Forge for this or not? Okay, because it falls under BCIU. It's the only reason I asked the question, Mr. Deroff.
I don't have any information on it, they didn't talk to me. They didn't talk to me about it.
Yeah, this has been something that, and we've had a good partnership with them there at Washington. And under item H, again, an annual recurrence, this is the Berks County IU, their mandated district services budget. And I'm just going to have Mrs. Dennehy go through a couple of facts and figures with you with regard to this budget.
So, the IU's budget for mandated services is in the sum of $2,191,504. The Boyertown Area School District's projected cost for 2025-26 is $108,153.28. This amount represents a 3.84% increase over our 24-25 contribution and legislation mandates that each school district that participates in the BCIU must approve their budget. This budget, or this budget will be placed on the 25th agenda for approval.
Any questions in regards to it? All right, our last informational item, this is, I'm going to invite Mr. Palladino to the podium to just speak about this. This is a grant and we've been working with Senator Muth on this throughout the fall. We've finally come to fruition with regard to this and I'm just going to have Mr. Palladino explain a little bit in regards to its financial setup.
First, before I speak on that, I just want to give some recognition. This past weekend out in Altoona, our varsity boys wrestling team finished fourth in the state in the AAA. And if, you know, Pennsylvania for high school wrestling is one of the, if not the best high school wrestling state, so fourth place at, in Pennsylvania is a great accomplishment. So, we're going to bring the kids in once the season's over. They have their individual tournament starting now, so they're still training. Once that all, you know, gets completed, early spring, we'll bring the team in for recognition. But I just wanted to bring the, they wanted me to ask you to show you the trophy, you know, it's a nice trophy, so I told them I'd bring it up and, you know, let everybody know their accomplishment they had this weekend. So, the reason I'm here tonight is for, it's called Aiden's AED Action Plan. It's through Senator Muth's office, the Chester County Intermediate Unit and the Chester County, I mean, yeah, United Way of Chester County. They've awarded in Senator Muth's district, Senate District 44, all the school districts were eligible to receive AEDs for their buildings. We were awarded 11 AEDs and 11 cabinets. So, we can take, we're last, we're going back like about a year now, my athletic training department went around to each building, looked at the AEDs we currently have, identified if they needed to be replaced or if we just needed another AED in that building. So, we met with Senator Muth and Chester County Intermediate Unit, they awarded us 11. So, in reality, we can almost put one in every building. As of last year, we didn't have any that needed to be immediately replaced. Every like two to four years, the batteries go bad in them, you have to replace the batteries. Sometimes they don't. It's like any other technology, you can't always get the replacement parts for it, so you have to replace the whole thing. Sometimes the cabinets go bad, they have sirens on them that don't work after a while. So, what we're going to do then is, once we gain approval, is go back, look at all of them again and see if anything changed in the past year, replace those first and then if none of those need to be replaced, look to add on in certain buildings if we need them. So, how the program works, we have to, we have a vendor who Senator Muth's office identified, the price of the AEDs range anywhere between $2,000 and $2,600 apiece. That's with the AED and the cabinet. If we want a climate-controlled cabinet, there is an additional cost to that. We don't think we'll really need any of them because all the ones we're looking at right now are going to be indoors. We, once we order them, we order them through a purchase order through the vendor. We have to install the AEDs, take a picture of it, show that invoice was sent to us and then we will be reimbursed from Chester County Intermediate Unit for those costs. Also with that, there's a few training aspects that we have to take care of. Most of we already do. We have emergency response teams. They have to be trained every year for, you know, we have to have like a whole building emergency response drill. Also, they have to be CPR certified. This also gives us up to $2,000 to redo any CPR certifications we need done. So, that's also part of this grant.
How many AEDs do we have currently?
I'd have to get that number for you, I don't have it off the top of my head. Most of them, the high school has, of course, has more than once, the biggest building. I think the middle schools might have two in each. Most of the elementary schools, I believe, fixed units might be one. Now, some of the nurses have portable units. My trainers also have portable units that they keep on themselves and take with, take with them. So, we have that already compiled. I can get you that information.
Yeah, that would be good to know also. Thank you.
Where's the closest one to Bear Stadium? I unfortunately was there during a medical emergency once and someone had to run all the way up to the high school.
Right now, the closest fixed unit is in the high school. What we do now with, during the summer with our Legion program, we leave a portable unit down there for them, so they have it in the, it's in the, we call Bear Den, in the one office down there. We leave it down there for that. The only problem is, it has to be climate-controlled, so a lot of times they take it and they'll bring it back to us up in the high school. We don't want to leave it down when it gets real hot down there for a long period of time. But right now, we do not have any fixed outdoor units anywhere. We explored that a little bit in the past. I can have that conversation with Dr. David Heiser again on where to put them, additional cost it would be because they do have to be in a climate-controlled box with access to them, but it has to be almost like a pass-key lock access because you don't want anybody just come, because it's a very expensive unit, somebody can just come and take it. But then everybody who's around... somebody can just come and take it. But then everybody who's around there has to be, has to have access to it, has to know that code.
It was a terrifying situation, so it could happen again.
Yeah. Yeah, now, it used to be where you, you needed all this training just to operate one. All the new ones now, they, as soon as you turn it on, it tells you exactly what to do. Like it pops up on the screen, put this, put this here, put this there, hit this button. It, we, we will have, part of this is some of the trainings are like an online module, which it pretty much shows you that video. So, but they're almost, they're almost foolproof now, where they show you exactly what to do on a unit and it will not work unless everything is done in that order properly.
How's our liability insurance look at that?
That I don't know. That would have to be a, that would probably be a Mrs. Denneke question.
Especially with, if you say, training is minimal, it might be something just to look into with the liability, how our liability carriers look at that.
Any other questions for Mr. Palladino? Looks like a great opportunity. We'll bring this forward and place this at the next legislative meeting. Thank you.
BCTC report, Mr. Updegrove?
Yeah, I have a report. We're working on contract negotiations at the BCTC. Just settled one with the support staff for that school. And now we're working on the budget. And as of right now, we are out about 850-some thousand out of budget at the BCTC. And we'll have a meeting here tomorrow night.
At this time, we'll be looking for the approval of the January 28th, 2025 Board of School Directors Meeting Minutes.
So how to move.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
No.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Takes us to our superintendent's itemized agenda for personnel. And prior to any motions, I'd just ask that Mr. Han comes forward and explains some of the components to this agenda item.
Thank you. So there's a few things that I just want to draw your attention to. We have a recommendation for hire for a new school police officer for Middle School West to, to replace Mr. Enright, who is on the agenda as a resignation. Mr. Roddenbush is our recommended candidate. We met with multiple candidates last week. Mr. Roddenbush has over 20 years of experience as a Philadelphia police officer and also is an SPO at Daniel Boone. So he is our candidate of choice for that role at West. We also have, after the last board meeting, we received some emails regarding the nursing staff within the district. So I just wanted to draw your attention to the new staff nurse that we have, who is starting at Earl Elementary, as well as our CSN that's gonna be starting at Middle School West. Both of those individuals were interviewed multiple, on multiple occasions and are candidates of choice for those two roles. The email that we received was in regards to the staffing ratio for students to certified school nurse. That ratio per PDE is one certified school nurse for every 1,500 students. So we have roughly 6,000 students and we have six full-time CSNs. So we're far exceeding the mandate by PDE for certified school nursing. And then the other, the only other two things that I just wanted to draw your attention to, to the personnel agenda, is the IT personnel. At the last board meeting, the board approved the two new job descriptions, and we have Director Fite's recommendation for those two individuals on this agenda.
All the substitute custodians we're hiring, what's the deal there? I've never seen that many before.
Yeah, so it was a...
It's good, I'm not complaining.
Yeah, because of the amount of time off due to work comp claims that have occurred, obviously that department was hit pretty hard with some injuries, as well as just the everyday absences due to injury, illness, families. We decided to put together a substitute custodial pool so that we could plug and play people when we have the need. So I believe we're up to about five now. And those individuals obviously are working on a part-time basis and will be utilized by the operations department in, in the capacity of a custodial, when, custodial staff when, when needed.
And we had a lot of work with comp claims. Are we checking on what the problem is? What's going on, or?
Yeah, so every time, we have to do an investigation into a, a work-related injury before and, and after, obviously, the claim is, is submitted to AM Trust. We see a lot, due to the nature of the, the position, we do see some, some strains, some shoulder injuries, wrist injuries. We have a return to work program here, so typically people return on light duty within a few days. But we do an, an analysis of all the injuries and what we can do to potentially prevent that same injury occurring to that same employee or to another employee in a like or similar situation.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There's no one signed up for public comment period number two, so will we go into board comment? Mr. Updegrove?
Yes, I just wanna congratulate the wrestling team on their fourth place finish. They did very good. The competition's tough when you get down to the end, and that's what it boils down to. But thank you for those guys doing it.
Ms. Nyman?
I just wanted to give a shout out to our math counts teams. I saw in the paper that our team from West placed first at the, the Berks County chapter competition last month, and East placed second. So math counts is really hard, so that's quite an accomplishment. And I wish them the best at the state competition next month. And also, I just was thinking about like, how we recognize athletes. It seems a little inconsistent, like sometimes we recognize athletes that made it to states and sometimes we don't. So I just was wondering how we can make that more consistent. It's almost worse, I think, to have inconsistency than to, than to do it, if that makes sense.
So one of the things that ironically, Mr. Panarello and I discussed was an, an end-of-season update and recognition to you as a board, to which we could recognize each season.
I would love that.
So our fall, winter, and spring seasons, kind of give a recap of each of the teams and some of the highlights to those, and certainly some of the student athletes that, you know, really stood out and advanced, you know, mostly into the state-level types of competitions. So I think you can expect that coming as we work through seasonally from, from here on out.
Academic honors too, would be nice.
I'm sorry?
I said, and some academic honors also.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. That's not broken seasonally, but we'll, we'll do our best.
I just wanna thank Leah, Casey, and Mallory for a great job. They did a wonderful job. Thank you to the teachers that encourage our students to step out like that, because it's not always easy for them, and so I appreciate that.
Mr. Duroff?
I just wanna thank the children for coming and reading that book to us. That was, that was really nice. And I have a tip for them for next year, how to get more poundage of their food for their food pantry, is contact the board and the meeting before to have us all bring something in for them and administration. And that'll really build up their pounds. So I guess they went home already. Oh, got it. So don't forget. I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Thank you so much for doing what you do with the children. It means a lot.
So you did have one really big crate and one really tiny crate, right?
Dirty.
Where'd the dirty come from?
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Get the crates ready for next year.
The wrestling was in Altoona, correct? Did you guys come in ahead of Berks Catholic?
Different division.
Oh, a different division? I just wanna know if like, my grandson was gonna beat me up, was, could've beat me up or not.
Yes, I definitely wanna thank Culverdale for the Super Bowl. That was awesome. And Ms. Duroff, great suggestion. I would love to donate next year.
All right, Brad, I'm gonna steal some of your thunder. He brought up earlier about the Super Bowl commercial, the one with flag football for girls. And he brought up, right, for the first time in a long time, Boyer Town was ahead of the curve. So thank you. And the NFL showed how they were gonna request, but yeah, my mother and my sister said, what? And I said, we already got it. So thank you Culverdale for hosting us as usual, did a great job. I don't know if everybody realizes this, but the, our strategic planning team that Mr. David Heiser put out, and from what I understand, we had a pretty good turnout back, but we as board members are welcome to be involved in any of that. So I think some of this stuff would be interesting to see where those committees are steering us. And maybe we could put some in, put in it as board members. Other than that, everybody have a great night and be safe tomorrow in the snow.
Starting next Wednesday will be our first steering committee meeting.
I wanted to thank Culverdale for having us tonight. The kids did a great job. Congratulate the wrestlers, and I look forward to seeing how they do in their individuals, if we bring back any state champs.
I forgot, I left out the girls wrestling too, so.
So just a couple updates on, on meetings that are up and coming. Next week, next Tuesday the 18th, we are hosting a special meeting that will be in the Education Center, both on policy and facilities. That does begin at 6:00 PM. And then our legislative meeting, regularly scheduled legislative meeting on the 25th will again be at the Education Center. That begins at 7:00 PM.
Motion to adjourn?
No, I'm gonna move.